Good evening. Do I have a motion to open the April 26, 2023 Regular Business Meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education?
Motion.
Second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Michelle, would you please do a roll call?
[inaudible].
Here.
[inaudible].
Here.
[inaudible].
Here.
[inaudible].
Here.
[inaudible].
Here.
[inaudible].
Yeah.
[inaudible].
Thank you, Michelle. Do I have a motion to recess into executive session? We have teacher and contractual matters to discuss.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. We are recessed. Do I have a motion to reopen the April 26, 2023 Regular Business Meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education?
Motion.
Second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Michelle, would you please do a roll call?
[inaudible].
Here.
[inaudible].
Here.
[inaudible].
Here.
[inaudible].
Here.
[inaudible].
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And I kindly ask that you remain standing at the completion of the pledge to honor the lives of Pat Pollicio and Marie Orsini as two long-term employees that were here within our school district.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have one set of minutes from the April 12, 2023 Board of Education meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. At this time, if any member of the public...
Another set of minutes.
Oh, we have a second set of minutes?
Yes.
Just kidding. We have a second set of minutes from the April 18, 2023 Board of Education meeting. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes as well?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Good eye. Thank you. At this time, if any member of the public would like to address the board, please do so by approaching the podium, state your first and last name. It does not appear that we have any public participation. Moving on to exciting news, as always within our school district, we had a really interesting event between the Harrison and Rye students. We had a mixer for youth-to-youth members attending the Rye ACT Club, and these members decided to promote safety and healthy choices on 3,000 concession stand items that were sold at the game, the Harrison-Rye game, back in October. And the two clubs have really stayed connected, and they've been planning this event, and it occurred on Friday, April 21st. So they came together for some healthy competition and hopefully some new friendships. So we're really not always rivals after all. The activities included a spike ball tournament, ping pong, freeze dance, cupcake decorating, some Harrison and Rye trivia, cornhole DJ, lots of fun, and free food. And the clubs from both schools attended and ran the activities. And from what I hear, I think we had like close to 120 or even more students that attended. And of course, we had our wonderful Harrison High School SRO Joe Perillo, and thank you to him for donating his DJ services, and the student assistant counselor Dana McCarthy for organizing this event. It was very well-attended and had lots of fun. We had another interesting, wonderful recognition. So the Harrison Central School District received the Best Communities for Music Education Designation from NAMM, which is the National Association of Music Merchants, and this Foundation for a Outstanding Commitment to Music Education. So this award is given to districts that really demonstrate outstanding achievements and efforts to provide music access and education to all students. So we were one of eight that won this award because we prioritize the arts, and it's really embedded within our curriculum. And it's the Foundation Advances Act of Participation and Making by supporting science, scientific research, philanthropic giving, and public service programs. So we are really honored to have been recognized. We had two Harrison students that were selected to participate in the program for the White Plains Hospital Pre-Med, Brian DeWolf and Eduardo Almeida. Talk about many different pathways. We're seeing this come to fruition in every aspect within our school district. Senior Alyssa Carasquillo placed second in the EMT Trauma Assessment Category at the State Health Occupation, the host of competition Students of America. So it's the State Health Occupation Students of America Competition.
Very well done.
So yeah, congratulations to Alyssa. The Science Olympiad competed in New York State Competition in Syracuse. We had many medals that were awarded. Fifth-place medal for the Bio Process Lab, Mizuki Shimatani, as well as Shaili Singh. Eighth-place medal for Experimental Design, which awarded to three students, Atarv Gandhi, King Kritikos, as well as Shaili Singh. As well as the eighth-place medal for Meteorology, Reito Sakin and King Kritikos. So congratulations to all in the Science Olympiad for their wonderful recognition and Our senior bassist in orchestra Lauren Ugarti was accepted to a number of the most highly competitive music schools in the country, including Boston Conservatory, New England Conservatory, Manhattan School of Music, and Juilliard. She has not made a decision yet, but this is quite an accomplishment wherever she decides to land.
And Mr. Bastone couldn't have been any prouder last night. She did a fabulous solo at the orchestra concert. It was just unbelievable.
Moving on to athletics, the Huskies defeated, the Husky baseball team defeated Pelham 15-4. Marco Citro pitched a complete game, striking out 11 batters and giving up four runs. Christian Rossi was 4-for-4 with a three-run homerun. The Huskies defeated Eastchester 10-4. Luke Burden pitched six innings, allowing one run and striking out 10. The team is 8-for-4 with eight games remaining. Also, the Andrew Gurgitano Memorial Game is Saturday, April 29th at Silver Lake Park. The game is at 4:00 PM, and ceremonies will begin at 3:30. And congrats to Coach Duraco on his 200th career win. That's quite an accomplishment.
Yeah, Mr. Galano sent a lovely note. We're all very proud of Marco, not just because he's gotten 200 wins, but he continues to demonstrate all the qualities we want to see in a coach. He's a teacher first, and then a coach, and just a wonderful steward of young people. And we're very proud of not only those 200 victories, but the kind of person that he is and the kind of example he sets. So if you're listening, Mr. Duraco, congratulations.
Our Harrison boys golf team defeated Byram Hills. Henry Hervitz won the gold ball given to the golfer with the lowest round. The Huskies also defeated Eastchester. A student thing I think I've heard of before, Tommy Mangan earned the gold ball. The team defeated Bronxville, and Tommy Mangan also earned another gold ball, shooting 38 for the round and leading the team to the win. The team defeated Pelham and remained undefeated. Tommy Mangan shot a low score of 38.
Somebody's on a hot streak.
Yeah. Congratulations to these boys. The girls' golf team defeated Bronxville. Olivia Naprano shot the lowest score of the day with a 39. Congratulations. The Huskies lacrosse earned a big season win at home versus Fox Lane, 9-8 in overtime. Maria Spousado had a big stop in goal with seconds left in regulation. Kayla Porto had the game winner in first overtime. After the game, a number of our players ran inside to change to participate in the National Honor Society Induction Celebration. Our students clearly not only show dedication on the field, but also with their academics and work as well.
Ms. Bukama and I were sitting on the stage, and Kayla made it just in time. She was actually one of the presenters that night and came right off the field.
I love it.
And was also one of the kids who had a lot to do with the organization of that Harrison-Rye mixer. So congratulations, Kayla. Heck of a few days.
And that was lacrosse softball. The Huskies softball team defeated Brewster 15-2. Gabby Traino pitched a complete game, striking out 14. Ava Tadio led the Huskies offense, going 4-for-5. Sophia Pinella was 2-for-2 with three runs batted in. The Huskies defeated Walter Panna 16-1. Kaitlin Cabral pitched a complete game, striking out four. Barbara Jo Coppola was 3-for-4 with a triple and three runs batted in. And our Huskies, they remain undefeated and were recognized by the Low Head as the number two team in the softball power rankings. Keep it going, girls. That's pretty impressive. The Fulton Invitational was on Wednesday. Our track and field team meet is attended by many area schools. There were many Husky personal records. Congratulations to Sandeep Fernando for winning the pole vault competition.
For those of you who don't know why it's called the Fulton, some of us do, Dennis Fulton was a longtime middle school science teacher and also an extraordinary track coach for many years. And the team, about 10 or 12 years ago, decided to name an invitational in his honor. He's still alive, but it's not a memorial. So if you're still around, Mr. Fulton, we're still proud of you.
The Rye-Harrison Rotary Luncheon recognized two players from the annual Rye-Harrison Football Game. Each player is selected by the opposing team, and this year, Rye's football team selected Nick Reed. So congratulations to Nick.
Who's famous in a lot of households, Nick Reed. Nick the Kick.
I would also just like to remind the community to please keep an eye on the calendar. I mean, there is so much happening, some like multiple events in days. We have our upcoming PTA budget presentations. Actually, tomorrow evening is the first at Parsons Elementary. And I also just want to remind everyone that you can feel free to attend any school if a date works better for you or timing, but it is important to listen in and understand what's going on with our budget. And with that, Dr. Wool, I pass it over to you.
Thank you, and we're looking forward to our first PTA presentation tomorrow night at Parsons, and Dr. Leydwig and Mr. Whipple will be joining me. But before I get into some news, I just want to go back to our moment of silence. I didn't know Marie Orsini, but I know that she served three different superintendents, and that in and of itself is something no one else should ever have to do. That's a lot of people to deal with, but I did want to speak about somebody that I know some of us remember quite well, certainly Michelle and Larry. Pat Pollicio was an enormous personality with an incredible amount of skill and energy. And I know Bob Salerno, who was our longtime business official, loved her dearly, and she made a big difference in his successes here, and he shared his condolences with me. But to the family of Pat, she's always going to be a part of the good things that happened over the last 20 years, so thank you. And we do remember when people give us good service. I do have some other news. Let me try to be concise tonight because we have a very exciting presentation and a very important presentation that will help you understand who we really are. But I want to commend my colleague, Dr. Leydwig, who works pretty much around the clock, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And he's been all over recruiting teachers at recruitment fairs as far away as Boston and upstate New York, and some of his colleagues have joined him. And we are doing our very best to get out in front in this very competitive market because we always try to get the best. And I can't help but smile as I look to my left, and I see a young lady who was named Kelly Famer when we hired her. We literally hired her as she was walking across the commencement stage. And Dr. Leydwig was on a recruitment, and he called me, said, "I think I found a really good one." And apparently, sir, you were right all these years later, so it does pay off. Lisa has been busy working with the entire team, along with Brian and Brian Sullivan, putting together our summer programs, not only for kids but for teachers. And Dr. Leydwig, we hope to launch the website for parents...
Next Friday.
Next Friday. What's the date on that?
May 5th.
May 5th. So you'll be able to see in advance, and if you know anything about our teachers and their love of professional development, it's like trying to get tickets to Taylor Swift. The moment we put the link up, there's a fight to see who can sign in. Maybe not quite, but pretty close to that. Couple of other things. Mrs. Tiburzi, who is our person who assists us in public relations, has been working tirelessly. So if you go under our News and Information page starting tomorrow, you can see the highlights of our school budget. We'll be using that as a teaching tool and a source of information at our presentations. I already mentioned that we have some upcoming meetings. I did have the rare opportunity to spend some time in Jen Driggers' classroom. She's an instructional coach, but also somebody that's helping us to innovate. Got to see some really thoughtful intervention strategies that we're in, not only using in our AIS classrooms, but soon in our general ed classrooms. So I thank Mrs. Driggers for being brave enough to invite the superintendent in to watch her practice. We are getting ready to recruit teachers from amongst our most talented faculty to enter another round of the Future School Leaders Academy, which is where we select teachers that we think have great potential for leadership and grow them over a two-year period where they earn a master's degree and ultimately come back to serve, as did Kelly Famer Malcheski. We're just going to keep mentioning her tonight, I guess. I also want to mention that we have been working so hard at preparing a memorial garden at our high school that really fits the philosophy and our belief that every human being in our organization should be respected and remembered in a way that is appropriate for their memory. So no one person is more important to us than another. And so very soon, later in the month, we will be opening a permanent memorial for any child who lost their life while they were a student here in Harrison, or any employee who lost their life while they were in service to the district. And I look forward to the day to opening that monument, but it's also going to be a very difficult day because there are so many important people that we have lost along the journey, and probably the hardest are children. But there were some phenomenal employees, too, that will be commemorated on that wall. Everything that we do here is with purpose, and it tries to remind us all that everyone matters. And so very grateful for the board for supporting that initiative. We did attend some concerts. We mentioned the orchestra concert, but we also saw the dance performance. I know some of our board members were there. You were there with your children, Mrs. Kozak. It was a wonderful performance. And we also got to see the incredible band performance, which was, to me, every time I see Mrs. Lurcher and her work with students, I'm astounded. I think there are excellent teachers, and then there are teachers that just are almost of another world. What she is able to extract, the level of rigor, the level of commitment, the level of joy evident in all of her students, she really is a remarkable person. We have a rock star performing arts program, and if you haven't seen our performances, as you said, check the calendar. Do not miss these. Andy, I don't know when those are coming up, but will they be aired soon?
Soon.
Soon. So if you miss them in real time, make sure you watch because Harrison High School is a phenomenal place. And that is my entree into Guess What? We're going to call this a five-year review, but it's really a decade-long review of the extraordinary work of our entire team to make Harrison High School, in my opinion, one of the most welcoming and successful places that a child can grow. So I don't know who's starting us off tonight, but come on up. I think it's you, Dr. Lisa, no middle initial Mulholland.
Thank you.
That's our inside joke. And Ms. Bukama always introduces me as Dr. Lewis N. Wool, as if they wouldn't know without my middle initial.
Let's see if I can get myself situated.
Yep. Make sure you pull that mic down a little bit, too.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for giving us the opportunity tonight to join you and to share a little bit more about our IB journey, specifically the diploma program. So this evening, I'll be joined by Ms. Bukama, the high school principal, Dr. Tyler, our IB program coordinator, Ms. Colonna, our director of social studies, and Ms. Malcheski, our director of guidance. We are going to share with you a little bit about how the diploma program has really impacted our students' experiences because all of the work, all of the accolades, all of the accomplishments, it's really about what students experience as they go through the process of going through high school at Harrison High School. So the mission of the International Baccalaureate Program, we've seen this many times, it aims to develop inquiring, knowledgeable, and caring young people who help to make a better and more peaceful world through intercultural understanding and respect. That sounds really lofty and aspirational, but if you've ever been on one of our tours at either LMK or at Harrison High School, if you, as you listen to the interviews you're going to hear tonight, I think that you'll see these aspirations alive and well in our students' experiences. We've also, over the course of our IB presentation, shared with you this IB learner profile. And again, these can seem like aspirations, things that we all hope to cultivate in our lives, being risk-takers, being principled, caring thinkers, and then the harder skills, like knowledgeable, enquirers. All together, they create an image of a high school student, of an individual in our world that's really prepared to face both the challenges and to take advantage of the opportunities that are before them.
So before you jump in, I think we're going to talk about this concept of reflection a little bit tonight, right? I want to just put a frame on something that is sometimes missed by folks. This organization is structured around the idea that every child is unique. So in most places, when you see an IB program, I was talking to our high school students who decided they wanted to interview me about this question, kids fight their way in. They have to test their way in, and there are a whole bunch of hoops they jump through. And I'm looking at Dr. Tyler, who has been the champion of our program since its inception. Our program tonight is not really a review of the IB program. It's a review of our commitment to the idea that every child can, and every child should be given the chance to participate. So when you hear this, I want you to keep thinking about the lens of our district. We see each child as unique, and what you're going to hear narrated tonight is how all of these journeys are collected through that ideology. Nobody is left behind, nobody is excluded, and success looks different for all of them, as do choices. And when you hear these things, I want you to remember that somebody's child is behind every one of those stories. There are children that do the full DP, there are some that dip in and out, but for each, opportunity is always there. And when you get to the data part, remember, you're not looking at data, you're looking at kids. So I want you to keep that really close tonight as we go through this. And I'm very proud, I said to the board before we started a few minutes ago, to me, this is one of the most important presentations we've ever done because it's a decade of data that shows one thing that the world could learn, that when you invite everybody in, everybody benefits. So let's reflect on that, Dr. Mulholland.
We will. Okay. So this is a graphic that we showed you during our PYP March presentation, and we were at that point trying to communicate this process of inquiry, action, and reflection that the PYP program provides for our students. But it's part of the whole process for all of us. So as individuals, thinking about the role that we play, and for our entire system, as part of this five-year review, we've really been interrogating every aspect of our organization, of our work, asking hard questions. How could we do better? Are there place, what's the next level of work for us? There's so much to be proud of, but we're also really focused on looking ahead to see where we can go next. So here's a timeline. You've seen this image as well, and it captures the process of the high school becoming a diploma program, the middle years program, and the primary years program, which we launched in 2021. The one thing that it doesn't show is underneath of the middle years program, as they were going through the process of being a candidate school here in LMK and getting authorized, the team at the high school was going through their very first five-year review. And now here we are again, five years later, and in a way, it's an anniversary. We're celebrating all that's been accomplished and all that's yet ahead. Tonight, we want to share with you not just how the diploma program has grown, but most importantly, how it's impacted our students' experiences. And with that, I'm going to introduce Ms. Bukama.
Hi there. I'm a little shorter than Dr. Mulholland. So good evening, and I'm very pleased to share, when I first actually came to the district, it was really just dipping into my second year here that we were going through the IB five-year review, and the high school was partnering also with the middle school on implementing the middle years program. And it's hard to believe now that five years have gone by, and I'm in my second IB five-year review. So I thought it would be really valuable to first, it can be very confusing for people now that we're saying like we're a full IB district and it's going to be K through 12. What really makes the DP program distinct from the other programs, and really what makes it most similar to the other programs, and what do they share in common? So we really want to start by just building some like basic knowledge about the IBDP program, which some of you may be well-versed in, and some of you may like have maybe a less of a comfort level with. And I've even grown through the process of the second IB five-year review as I've learned a little bit more from talking to all of our stakeholders involved with this. So looking at those basic constructs, one thing that's really important to remember that we always get as a question from time to time about what students can participate in IBDP, and the big rule is you have to be a junior or senior. You cannot take an IBDP course as a ninth or 10th grader. That's not a Harrison rule, that is an IB diploma program rule. And then the second thing that is a commonality across the world is that all IB diploma students, whether you're a course candidate student or you are a diploma pathway student, everything is validated on a worldwide stage, which means that students are receiving critical feedback in comparison to their peers all across the world. Those are internal assessments and external assessments, and when I say internal assessments, nothing's completely internal with IB because those also go out to be externally validated from what we've graded and scored. And in a conversation I had with one of our seniors throughout this process, one of the things they shared they loved is that like to think that they're learning something in a classroom, that's the same thing students are learning across the entire globe. He used France, like that he just loves to think that, you know, I might be sitting in my math class, and I'm doing the same math that somebody in France is doing. And then the other similar anchor between all of the programs, that's the basic component for all of them, they're all really anchored in the IB learner profile, those attributes that I know we've spent some time learning more about throughout the course of our experience with IB with all of the different programs. And I chose particularly to put it up there as a puzzle, but our academic program is anchored in this, and you'll see later why I chose to put it as a puzzle, but this is the most familiar one that students have seen because we made posters of this when we first implemented the MYP program. So students that, you know, are our seniors now, started to first hear about this in eighth grade as we started the implementation of the middle years program there. And particularly, you're going to hear why they really like, this is a particular visual for this. So go into the next slide here. One of the most significant program or components of the IB program is student agency, and I say that slowly because I'm... that slowly, because I really want to emphasize, students' voice, choice, and ownership that they have in every different component and aspect of their experience in IBDP. And with that, I would like to turn it over to my colleague, who is going to really expand on that, Dr. Christopher Tyler, our IBDP Coordinator.
Great, thank you, Ms. Bukama. Yeah, 10 years, at least I don't look any older, so it's good.
I'll tell you whatever you want to hear tonight.
Yeah, there you go. So I'd like to concentrate on three major events or choices that students make as they come into the program. So we tried to expand student agency through the Middle Years Program, and so when the students arrive, there are some choices that they are making as they navigate into the Diploma Program. And so there are three major things that I'd like to just spend a couple of minutes on. One is the pathway through the program, so students get to choose their pathway through the program. The second is the breadth of courses that are offered to the students, that is also another area of choice that the students have. And then when the students get into the courses that they've chosen, they also get to select areas in which they want to concentrate on for their internal assessments. So that's really an amazing array of choice, the student agency for that. So those can all be daunting, but let me assure you that we have a lot of support, and Ms. Malchesky will talk about the support we give to students as they're making those choices entering into the program. So one of the first major choices that they do have is to kind of figure out which pathway they want to take through the program. One pathway is called the Course Certificate Pathway. And here, students make choices on the courses they're going to take, based upon their goals, their interests. They mix together both IB courses, non-IB courses, regions, APs, or electives, and they put together a schedule that's unique for them. Obviously, as they're doing that, they're also meeting requirements for graduation. The other pathway that the students can opt into is the Full Diploma Pathway, and like the Course Pathway, they're making those same choices about what they're going to be taking for courses, based upon their areas of interest. With this pathway, there are a couple more requirements that students must meet, and in these requirements, there's also an incredible amount of array of student agency as well. So students in this pathway, they take six IB courses, they also take a very interesting course called the Theory of Knowledge, and you'll hear from our students about how that has changed them. They also enter into an extended essay project. Here, they're paired with a teacher that also shares interests in what the students have chosen as their subject. Students design the question that they want to find the answer to, and then they go about answering that question that they have designed. And then the last kind of interesting option for students here, or requirement for students in the Full Diploma, is the Creativity, Activity, and Service Component. And this is where students get outside of the classroom, they identify the community and what level of the community that they want to work with, and they use their creativity, they move their body, and they give service to that community that they've identified. And then they reflect upon it, there's that reflection piece again. They reflect upon how that has changed the community that they've dealt with, as well as how it's changed them, and how they can think about themselves through that project. So that has incredible choice for the students. And let's just make sure I go the right way, there we go. The other choice that I was talking about is the courses, and if you look at this schematic, it's amazing the breadth and depth of the courses that we offer. So the IB organizes itself into six subject areas, and if you look at this, you can kind of, wow, that's amazing. If you compare us to other places, the depth in each one of these subject groups is quite remarkable. And I have to applaud the board for supporting the arts, because when you look at that group six, when you have visual arts, music, dance, and theater, that really sets us apart from other IB programs. We also are very special, and we still have to educate the IB in how we treat our math program, because we've really integrated our excellence in AP Calculus, as well as our multi-variable calculus course, and integrated that in with the IB to give students a wide range of choices in their math experiences. And so that's the second thing. Again, there's a lot of choice here, and that can be anxiety-producing, but again, Ms. Malchesky will talk about how we support students through that choice. And then when you get into these courses, as Ms. Bukama kind of alluded to, is there are two kind of major assessments in the IB world. One is the internal assessment, where students do an assessment that is specific to the subject area that they're in. It could be an oral assessment, it could be a written assessment, it could be a performance assessment. But students get to choose the subject area, the specific subject area that they are concentrating on in those assessments. So that's another wonderful area of choice for these students. So I don't want to bore you too much more, I want you to get right to the students. So I'm going to move it along and pass it back to Ms. Bukama.
I was just thinking about the anxiety issue. You know who else all these choices raises anxiety in? Mr. Mastroda, who has to make the master schedule.
Yes, it is difficult.
Having an anxiety attack just thinking about it.
Yeah. It's amazing, I mean, you look at just the breadth of our foreign languages, so you can come into this program without studying in Spanish and take an IB Spanish course, or you can be a native speaker for your whole life and take a course, and we have an appropriate course for you there. So the breadth there is quite dramatic, too.
And before you sit down, you know, we should just say out loud, at the end of 10 years, our IB program has gotten all kinds of recognition for its achievement, but one of the primary reasons it works is the kind of attention to detail and support that you give to individual kids, because sometimes kids become discouraged. It doesn't go unnoticed by me, or anybody else that you work with, Dr. Tyler, how much time you spend, just even as a cheerleader for kids, so...
Well, as I said this before, it takes a village, and there are a lot of people
There are.
looking over this program and helping the kids. So that's one of the benefits of doing what I'm doing.
Chris is really bad at taking "thank you," but he's done a phenomenal job with this program.
All right, so we've given you a lot of the technical pieces that are tied to the IBDP program, but what's really more interesting is why do we value the program? And all you have to do is talk to one of our students, and you absolutely will figure out why we value this program, and that's the joy of my job. I have the joy of being able to speak to students and hear about what they're doing, and hear about how what they're doing is actually changing their life. So with that, to, ooh, I want to forward that, to really make all of these different values come alive for you, or the different things that we really value about the program come alive for you, you're going to hear represented in some videos, student voice, where they're actually sharing our core values, represented in, you know, exactly how they're experiencing the program. So the students you're going to hear from represent all of our elementary schools, they represent the voice of special education, they represent the voice of a former ENL student. So we really tried to get a variety of readiness levels in the voices that you're hearing, in terms of what does their personalized pathway look like within the IBDP program? And you're going to hear about them building towards being lifelong learners, something that we value. You are going to hear over and over and over again, you've already heard it a little from Dr. Tyler and myself, the student agency that the program values and aligns to what we value. Also, you're going to hear over and over the personalization, the pathways, all of those things, not just in the choice in courses, but within the courses and within the entire program itself. And of course, in the IB five-year DP review, we are under reflection, and not only are we reflecting, built into the experience for students is a constant, constant piece of reflection. So here are my absolutely, I'm very proud to say, nine of our seniors. I wish that I could put all 234 of our seniors up there, because everyone that you are hearing from says something different, and had I spoken to all 234, they would have all shared something different. So just to reiterate, every single elementary school is represented up there, we even have a transfer student who came to us in her junior year, specifically, if you heard her entire recording, she was able to choose the high school she wanted to go to in the New York City area, so she researched it, because she knew she wanted to go to an IBDP school, and she chose Harrison. And one of the last things she said in her recording is that, "I'm so glad I made the choice that I made," which is like particularly like feels good to hear from a student who was brand new to us, and has just really been acclimated into the high school. Now, I've chunked all of the different pieces together, so hopefully it'll make sense, because you've heard, like I say, all the technical pieces, but what actually does it mean? I thought I had a pretty good level of understanding around IBDP, and I can tell you, after listening and talking and just having these great conversations with students, I understand the program so much better. So I tried to take some snippets to help you have that full understanding when we're talking all this IBDP lingo of like, oh, your IA, your EE, your CAS, your TOK, like what exactly are students doing in those places, and what difference is it making We're going to start right off here with the design of the program.
The IB wants you to like understand and like apply knowledge, rather than just like knowing it, which I think is really important for like the world to function, because I feel like most of the miscommunications happen, because we're not like aware of like how we're using knowledge. I think it's like, it comes down to the fact that IB teachers are not supposed to just teach you things, it's about the fact that IB teachers teach differently, they want you to not just understand the content, but be able to apply it. The main difference with an IB course versus any other course is that the way it's structured is so tailored to the real world. So like I was even mentioning econ, how we make sure that we're able to apply these skills to the real world.
Now, we're going to hear a lot about student agency. On there, we're going to hear a lot about student agency, and of course, the first piece of student agency is their choice, voice, and ownership that we say in their course selection process, and we're going to start off with KK here.
My interests, because sometimes you have to take certain classes all the time, but with the IB, I found that I had like room to choose something that interests me, and if I want to challenge myself through that subject, or if I just want to take it to just gain knowledge and understanding, so that's what I like about the IB.
The big choice of choosing your courses, which I really liked, because you're allowed to do what you want to hopefully study in the future, which is why I took the business course and my econ course this year, but there's also a lot of choices in your classes.
Now, you're also going to hear about the IA and the internal assessment, which in some courses is called the IO, which it means it's an oral assessment. I am shocked by the range, but every student that takes an IBDP course is doing some form of an IA or IO, and I will tell you, not one of them is alike.
Because we could essentially write about anything in the 20th century, and so I knew that I wanted to do something about, I just wanted to do something that interested me, because I thought, you know, if you have, which I think this is just, you know, intuitive, if you have a choice of what you're going to write about, why not write about something that interests you and makes you happy and excited to write about it? I just decided to analyze how American popular music changed over the course of the Vietnam War, and so that was really cool for me to do, because it opened my eyes to all the different music genres that sort of came about and were very much popularized because of the Vietnam War.
Last year, we did our IA, and we got to pick our topic for it, and what we wanted to study and investigate, and I chose something very niche, I chose hair elasticity for C hair, which is my hair type.
We had the freedom, I chose baseball in all my IAs, just that's what I'm comfortable with, uncomfortable doing, and I feel like that was really good, that we, the students got to choose what they wanted to do, because for my business IA, this year I did MLB. Last year, for math, I did baseball, and this year, for sports science, I did the effect on different surfaces, on ground balls. So I was really comfortable with all those three, and I feel like I did very good on all those three assignments.
Now, what you've heard so far are common experiences for any student in our junior and senior in our building. Now you're going to get into something that's a little bit, you know, more nuanced, which is our Full Diploma Program. So you hear about the EE, that is a requirement for the Full Diploma, which is like a 10 to 15-page research paper, very parallel to what you would be experiencing in college. So some of our Full Diploma candidates are going to share the same student agency they had with their EEs.
My EE was also based on cars. I studied Formula One more specifically, which is a sport I've been interested in since middle school, and I don't think I've missed one single race, but the EE was also a pretty, like my pretty proud accomplishment for me, because similar to the CAS project, you know, I had to research on my own, I had to write the essay on my own, while also working with a teacher.
I evaluated the extent to which I believe La La Land, the movie, is a true American musical, because hopefully, in my future, I want to do something like the business side of the entertainment industry, so I thought that was a cool way to kind of segue like that I take a business course and an economics course.
So I did an EE analyzing like the opportunities the samurais had available, and what they chose, and how it affected them.
Ended up using the extended essay as a way to understand more about that conflict, and like where I stand in there, and I feel like before the extended essay, it was just me like listening to people and like what they had to say, or like the brief things I picked up from social media, but honestly, like after the extended essay, I have like a better view on everything.
What was really interesting about the continuation of Zoya's, is she was studying her own culture, and she spoke to how she had such a better understanding and appreciation through kind of externally, like actually having to study this through the EE, and she ended up choosing to write her college essay. She described it as life-changing for her, and helping her build her identity, and that's what she went with on her college essay. Now next, another component of the IB Full Diploma Program is CAS, our community, I'm sorry, our Creativity, Activity, and Service Project that students do, which really is an extension beyond the academics. Students are reaching outside of their classroom, into our school community, and even beyond the halls of our school community, into the larger community, to really make an impact and really live that IB learner profile.
One of the things that I like about IB and the CAS program in general is that you're really able to incorporate your life, you know, whether it's outside of school or just like your life outside of the IB program, you're really able to bring things in. And so I was already working on and planning on directing a play for the spring play last year, and so when we started having to choose what we were going to do for our CAS projects, I thought that it was a perfect opportunity to bring something in for my outside life.
I was able to bridge the gap between new students coming into the school and fitting in the culture of Harrison, but also finding someone that matches the culture they're used to as well.
And now, TOK, Theory of Knowledge, thank goodness I don't have to fully explain this to you, because I always struggle with explaining what exactly is TOK? So the voice of our students is going to make it very clear. What I do know is it's really a safe space to have uncomfortable conversations, as students really examine knowledge from all different perspectives. And Jack says it very well, so roll the footage.
What isn't TOK, you know what I mean? Because you sort of learn about everything in TOK. I think the best way I can describe it is looking at the way that we learn, and looking at the way that we as humans sort of know different things, and maybe questioning the things that we know, and questioning the ways that we cultivate knowledge and create knowledge.
I really was fond of my like TOK exhibition so much, because the thing with the IB is it pushes you to like discover areas that you wanted to avoid, because you're a little uncomfortable. I choose what I know is really going to like push me to discover myself more, I feel like it's so much more about just like studying, like the IB really pushes you to like discover more about yourself.
So what does this all lead to? We started this road 10 years ago to really create opportunities for students, so we want to hear how those opportunities, and really hone into what students share about the next steps for college, because they don't share about walking into college with a bunch of... with a bunch of credits, which is oftentimes what you hear from students in, you know, other college preparatory programs where they have a college experience in high school. But with IB, they're really focused on other things.
I feel prepared coursework-wise, I feel like I've gotten, I've had good academic rigor in my high school, in my high school career, and I think colleges also value that a lot, and I think that, apart from how colleges look at it, I think it's helpful for me going into college because I have that sense of how to manage my time and independency and how I should split things up. I know that when I go into college in my freshman year, I'm not going to be like, I don't know at all how to write a research paper.
I do feel a lot better that I have been taking college courses in high school, so I feel like I'm definitely ready for the, for the workload that I'm going to be getting next year.
So I'm hoping you have a good understanding. I know I have a better understanding after talking to them exactly what everything means to experience that, when we talk about all of those different foundational components that just make up what IBDP is. But we've done a lot in the last five years, so we want to share a little bit of what we've done in the growth of the program and what does that really look like? So I'm going to invite my colleague, our Director of Social Studies and Business, Marlene Colonna.
Hi, good evening. I've had the privilege to be here for the last five-year review and to be here now again for this five-year review, so I wanted to share with you tonight some of the things that took place in the interim. We received so many accolades from the IB World Schools at our last five-year review that it was very clear to us that we were running a quality program. So the question is, what do we do next? Do we rest on our laurels? And the answer resoundingly was no, we widen the program to include everyone. If we have a quality, quality experience, we want to make sure that it's accessible to all. And these are some of the things that we've done. As you're aware, we brought in the middle-years program. All students, grade six through 10 then, become IB students. And those students are going to be exposed to the learner profile, they're going to be exposed to the IB skill sets, and they're going to be exposed to inquiry-based education. But one of the most important things I'd like to highlight tonight was the shift from traditional testing to project-based assessment. The students who are going to be our graduates this year shared with you all of their rich experiences in their inquiry-based research projects, some of them discipline-specific, some of them simply something that they were interested in. That doesn't happen by accident. We have to build the skills for students to be that independent. We still have traditional testing, but in addition to the multiple choice and the on-demand essays, in grade six, kids begin their own inquiry-based research projects. They have to design the projects, they have to monitor how they use their time so that they're able to finish, they have to know where they can go to find resources when they hit an obstacle, and they have to reflect on the process and they have to set goals on how they're going to improve on their next experience. We begin that in sixth grade, and we have layering complexity every year, five rich years of those experiences before the kids choose which diploma program courses they would like to take and what pathway they want to follow. In addition to that, we've increased our offerings significantly since five years ago. As a case study, I'd just like to call attention to Business HL in my own department, which is a new course. I know that Avery spoke about taking Business HL and taking economics at the same time and how that was a rich experience for her. That actually was born out of student agency and conversations with students who made it very clear that their pathway in college was going to be business and that many of them were interested in taking an MBA program in four years instead of five, and questions of how we were preparing them to do that. So we reached out to Hofstra's Business Program, got some suggestions from them, and now we offer a rigorous course, course pathway for kids to be successful in those types of business programs. We offer three college-level courses from W, from Westchester Community College in entrepreneurship, marketing, and accounting that students can take in their sophomore year, and then they go into the Business HL course, which is also college credit-bearing. And we were told by Hofstra, the single most important thing that we could do to ensure success was a rigorous economics pathway, as most of their first-year students in the business program really struggled with macro and microeconomics and that it was really quite a barrier. And our own Mark Treebrach has brought to us an amazing economics program that is wholly supportive of the Business HL. In addition to which, over the summer, we offer a readiness course in economics because we know that kids are going to struggle with that component of the program, so we want to build in a little bit of readiness so that kids can be successful. And finally, it's so important to understand that the success of the program is directly the result of the dedication of our teachers. Our teachers have embraced a new way of teaching, they've embraced the re, having to rewrite their entire curriculum and all of their assessments, they've embraced the IB philosophy. Every diploma program teacher is trained in their own individual subject area. All of our teachers, grade six through 10, are trained in the IB philosophy and the IB approach. And I'm very proud to tell you that we've almost trained all of our elementary school teachers. We have only one training left, and that's going to be in June, but they are also trained. So K through 12, we now have a consistent approach. And just want to give a shout-out to Ms. Bukama, because one of the things that we learned through conversations in our last five-year review is that at the high school, the, the high school teachers were very much siloed in their departments, and they really wanted to have a more interdisciplinary approach to the diploma program, but we didn't have any structures where those conversations could take place. And they and I reached out to Ms. Bukama, and she found a way to make that happen. So we have several faculty meetings now that are dedicated to interdisciplinary cooperation in the DP program and some superintendent's conference days. And one of the things that our teachers discovered is that they could work smarter, not necessarily harder. All of these courses end in individual inquiry, in investigation, a research project. So we had all of the teachers teaching research skills in exactly the same way at the same time. Because they were able to have this integrated interdisciplinary time, we were able to create a vertically-integrated way of thinking about skill acquisition and how skill acquisition should be taught. And when those cross-curricular connections can be made, it actually frees up instructional time and allows us to provide the kids more support in their individual journeys. So, thank you. And at this point, I'd like to bring up Kelly Melchesky, and she will explain to you how we support the students in the myriad of choices that they have to make in the program.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marlene. Okay, so what you've heard is all about the growth of the program, how we're looking to continue to expand and evolve, and with the expansion of the program and the growth of the program, we certainly have increased opportunities, but we have a lot of choices that students and families have to make, and we want to make sure that students are equipped and families are equipped to make choices that are the most rigorous, best-fit pathway for them. And that's really important to us because we want to make sure that students are uncovering their passions, their interests, they're recognizing their strengths, and we're making sure they're developing a course pathway that meets students where they are in that, and we need to make sure that we're incorporating rigor, because we know that's a really important aspect of students' post-secondary plans in the college process. You heard KK talk about it and Avery talk about it, that they really enjoyed the choice and that when they met with their school counselor, that's something they felt ready to do. But that absolutely does not happen by accident. This is a lot of information for students and families, and the only way to make sure that students and families feel well-equipped to make these choices is to build structures, to create structures throughout students' experiences at the high school so they are ready. First and foremost, it's important that we take care of any technical barriers, and we had a major one, you know, not so many years ago, where students were electing to not take IB choices because it was a, there was a financial barrier. So we very quickly identified that students were making choices not based on their most rigorous best fit, but maybe because of the financial obligation that was required. So we are very lucky and are very proud that the district pays for all the IB exam fees for every student in our school district. And I can't emphasize how much that has led to new opportunities for students, and the fact that we can begin to have these really interesting conversations about these highly personalized pathways for students without those barriers changes everything for the lives of our students. Now that we have that in place, of course, we have a lot of other structures to support student choice. We're really proud as a guidance department to offer individual academic advisement meetings with students and families. At a minimum, families have one of those meetings per year where the family is invited in or can join via Zoom, whatever is most comfortable for them, where they talk about all of these choices. But we recognize that the choices in the 10th grade year are really big choices about the diploma program, and we don't expect students and families to enter that meeting ready or, you know, make these choices by accident like KK and Avery described. So we want to make sure we've designed structures to support that meeting. In addition, we want to make sure students and families are well-equipped to make the decisions in these course selection meetings. So what have we developed? We've developed whole-group curriculum meetings. So Dr. Tyler, Ms. Bukama, and I meet with every single 10th grader, so we, you know, will partner with the director to take a class period to meet with them. We go through all of this, this entire program, we answer questions, we want students to see the different facets of the program and make sure we're answering any questions ahead of that individualized meeting. A lot of the work is happening also directly between students and teachers. Teachers do a really wonderful job of what I call course marketing, but really, they're talking about their courses and the courses that are next in the sequence in their classrooms, and who better to do it than the content area teachers? Also, there's individual conferencing happen. I can't tell you how many times a student will walk into the guidance office and describe an interaction or a conversation they had with a particular content area teacher about what they should take next year. Again, those teachers know the students so well, and they also understand the pathway incredibly well, so they're a great resource. Also, behind the scenes, high school counselors meet every year, at least once a year, but often many more times, with academic directors, certainly all the time with Dr. Tyler, who's in the same hallway as us, where we're constantly learning about the programs, the pathways, the curriculum, the changes to the way in which topics are taught and discovered in the classroom. We want to make sure that, again, the counselors are then equipped to support students and families in their offices during those individual meetings. And Dr. Tyler and I often host meetings with students and families who are either new to the district or even, you know, who want another opinion or advice about their correct pathway or an appropriate pathway for their students, so that happens frequently too. We're also resources to families in this process. So we are excited about all of the structures we've developed to make sure students are ready to make the right choice and families are ready to make the right choice. We really want students and families to own this, and we want them to be ready to do so. Now, if they're making all of these choices and we've now equipped them, we hope to make really good ones, we also need to make sure we have structures in place to ensure student success in the chosen pathway. So Ms. Bukama will share more with you about that.
Okay, if we are going to be offering more choices for students and we're going to be working really hard to get them in those classes, what we want to definitely make sure is that we're offering them the supports that they need to be successful in them. So the first thing we examined is really the accessibility of our offerings. So for example, when we were initially going through the last IB five-year review, we only offered an HL in literature and English. Now, we offer an SL Lang and Lit. And then, since our last IB five-year review, we've also made that a course for all students in the sense that students entering 11th grade, unless their IEP dictates a more restrictive environment than a co-teach setting, they will, all other students will enter into the choice of having Lang and Lit SL or Literature HL. In addition to that, we offer courses in Math SL, and all of our students are going into those places, and so we have now offered extension classes in them, which is an additional class every other day for students who need more targeted support in completing some of the assignments with IB. And also, preparing, because of the side-by-side to this with English, they're also preparing their junior year for Regents exams. In addition to both of those, in the summer, you'll have a course offering for students that are identified to build up some more readiness skills before they enter either of those courses. And then, also, the accessibility and the appeal of offerings. IB Sports and Exercise and Health has really taken off in our building. It is an offering that has just come up in the last couple of years. Last year, we found ourselves in the hours before opening the schedule and sharing with students, we had to create another section of it because just the request had, had really exceeded our demand for students who had enrolled over the summer. That said, we're really excited to see the outcome of that as students now are starting to take the external assessments in that course for the first time, and it's really starting to diminish our electives that students had formally taken their senior year, where we only really have a small number of sections running of electives that aren't IB in science. And then, when Marlene shared adding the HL in business, we also look to add HLs in other places. All of our world languages, five years ago, only were SL courses, and now we have HL Spanish, we have HL Italian, we have HL French, we have just choice everywhere. And then, of course, as Dr. Tyler mentioned, for students who are brand-new to a language, we also offer Spanish Ebenequio. I already talked a little bit about special ed, but I want to add into that ENL. I said the words co-teach. That is true. We offer now co-teach. Five years ago, we had no co-teach courses in IB. We now offer that in English, and we offer that in math, both, for not just special ed students, but offer for our, also for our ENL population. And I'll add into that, even in preparing students for that next step with IBDP classes, even now in AP World in 10th grade, we offer an ENL-supported section for our higher readiness ENL students. I already mentioned the summer opportunities for students to support them with our next steps. We've continued with our IBDP orientation as well as those courses to build readiness in some of our IB courses that are, you know, stretching students to really move beyond maybe where they ever thought that they could be. And then, of course, within the process of all of this, throughout the course of every school year, we are in a constant state of progress monitoring to look, see how students are performing, figure out what interventions need to be put into place for them. Oftentimes, that is a change in schedule, but it's not a drop of a course, it's an addition of an intervention for them to be able to get the support during the school day. So, obviously, all of this I'm speaking of in the last five years and even since the inception of the program 10 years ago. What you heard, what we heard, at least five years ago, which I didn't feel like I had a ton of ownership in because I was brand-new here to the high school, but we were told at that time that we are a model for American public schools attempting the implementation of the IB program. And now, you've heard all the things that have happened in five years. I'm super excited to get our new feedback that we're going to get. We do know that we have recently learned, within the last two years, that we are in the top 3% internationally in enrollment in the IB program, which we are thrilled to see because, as I said before, that's just opportunity for our students. And just here's some of the data to show that. And while we were always proud five years ago of the number of students taking like, one course, you know, which would be one class over two years, that we are now seeing an increase in our students who are taking multiple IBDP courses. So if you look at how many of our students are taking six or more over the course of two years, we have over 80%. And then, if you look, over 50% of our students, approximately 53% of them, across the combination of their junior and senior year, they are taking 10 or more classes that are IBDP classes. And then, how does that fare out for our students with disabilities? We didn't used to have any students with disabilities really represented in maybe other than one class, and now we are seeing multiple students with disabilities taking classes, obviously with the math and the English having the co-teach availability. We see over 70% of all of our students with disabilities in those unless their IEP dictates otherwise. Then, when they're taking multiple courses, like our Sports Exercise and Health, a lot of them are taking also our SL Business Course, we are now seeing across two years that they are taking six or more, or we have a population now of students taking 10 or more courses from our students of disabilities, which means that their junior and senior year, the predominant part of their day is sitting in IBDP classes. And you actually heard one of their voices in one of the previous videos, they feel prepared to go to college as a result of that, and as we talked about in an earlier session about our college enrollment, like, students need to see themselves in that space that they're, they actually could accomplish it, and this gives them the experience to do that. And then, students who are on free and reduced lunch. We never used to see a representation, especially in our full diploma program, from students that were from this particular subgroup that we identify in the data, and not only are they, of course, taking one or two or more courses, we now have over 30% of 30% of students taking 10 or more classes that are from that population of students. And I probably should have shared, like, when you look at the progression, the first, like lighter gray area is when the program began. And then if you look at the center darker gray line, that is for when we went through the last IB five-year review. And now, of course, this is the data from actually this school year, '22, '23. So this is all based on enrollment in courses. Now, this may seem daunting because I was like, wow, what is going on in this slide? But it really actually is pretty easy to digest. So if you look at the first group of all of those different bar graph lines there, under, where it says number of IB and AP exams, those are the number of exams that we are given since the program began. So these are students who are enrolled to take the test. If you can see, and if Dr. Tyler looks tired next to me, we have over 1,300 students taking exams where the first one begins this Friday for this school year. I know we mentioned the IAs earlier. This represents, obviously, each of those 1,300 exams are tied to a student sitting in a class, writing an IA or experiencing an IO. And he has to upload every single one of those onto the IB website. He shared with me, for one particular IA, it took 65 clicks for one student's upload. So he's been burning the candle. So thank you to Dr. Tyler for continuing to support the growth of this program and the work that that entails. And then when you look over to the right, that shifts to how are students performing? Have we started to see a dip in performance based on, like, enrolling more students? We know it's the right work because we know that students are going more prepared to college regardless of their results on an IB or AP exam. And we're really excited to say we're not seeing a dip in performance. So each of those, when we see exam papers, so we have, you know, close to 1,000 students who are scoring, I'm sorry, 1,000 individual, like, exams where students are earning what we would deem a proficiency. So that would be a four or greater on an SL IB exam, or a, I'm sorry, a three or greater on an IB SL exam, or a four or greater, no, I said that wrong again, a four, a four or greater on an SL IB exam, and then it's a three or better on an HL exam. And then for, of course, AP, it's a standard of a three, four, or five to deem that the student has reached proficiency or beyond. So we are very proud not to see that dip in our scores as a result of increasing our participation.
Before you leave that slide, though, I think that the board should take a deep breath and look at that slide because it essentially proves the theory of the Harrison Central School District that when you include more kids, the misperception is your performance as a high school will go down. The reality is Harrison High School went from being a mediocre to below-average high school to one of the highest-performing high schools in the world. And that was by inviting children in and building a system that supports them in their uniqueness and in every step of the journey. And instead of saying, "You are not welcome," we are saying, "You are not only welcome, but we're going to commit to helping you succeed." This is what researchers come to visit us about. This is why Dr. Tyler gets calls, and this is why IB schools come here, because remember, we are unfortunately still one-of-one. Most school districts have kids test their way in. This school district, this school board, everything that we've talked about tonight is an artifact of a community committing to a sense of principles that everybody's child deserves an opportunity to succeed. And the big lie is that somehow that won't work. Well, here's 20 years of evidence, ladies and gentlemen, 20 years, not 10 minutes. This might be our 10-year review, but there are many people that have been sitting in this room since we started this journey, and we know firsthand, those are not bar graphs. Those are children. Those are lives that were changed by the work of all the people in this room and all the people in this district. So this slide, there's not a superintendent in the country that wouldn't want to change places and take these results. But I will say, it's not about an individual, it's about a commitment from a community to the principle that all means all.
I was going to add that when we completed our last IB assessments and got the results last summer, I actually got a call from the head of IB North America, David Weiss, who was like, "How did you guys do that?" He really wanted to try to build some understanding how we could possibly accomplish that. And I would actually point to the three slides that preceded the data that Kelly, Marlene, and I spoke to in terms of just the supports put in place, the accessibilities of offering, helping students make the right choices, but also not closing any doors to them, and also building teacher readiness around, like, bringing them together as a faculty and really building the readiness around whether it's, "How can we better build in the IB learner profile inter-curriculum? How can we better build international-mindedness into our curriculum? How can we make our courses more accessible?" And the teachers have really been behind that work, and that's really a nice segue into, I'm putting up the mission statement again, because what I want to say is, not only, obviously, do we in this room believe in the IB program and what the IB program stands for, our teachers are behind that, and they're behind that with our core values leading them in that work. And so what I want to show you in these last few words, I want our kids to have the last words, it seems very fitting, is how are they experiencing this and how is this mission statement manifested in each of them? And how do they actually experience, like, the supports and the work of our teachers? So we're going to first hear from some of our students talk about, actually, the role that their teachers and the school counselors have played in their lives.
My teachers all support me so much, I think. Whenever I have a problem, I'm a big extra-help attendee. I think it's a great place to, like, one, get your questions answered, but two, build connections with teachers and have that relationship.
So I didn't really think that I could take Dance HL. I didn't think it was really an option for me, but my teacher, Ms. Totita, she explained to me that, yes, there is a dance component to it, but there's also a big writing component, and she recognized my strengths as a writer and also offered Dance HL as an opportunity for me to grow as a dancer.
Teachers are always available. Teachers want to help you. I feel like that's what a lot of students forget, the teachers want to help you, so they're always going to be there for you to help you whatever you're going through. I feel like if you just communicate with your teachers, they are very, they know, like, they know what you're going through, they understand that playing a sport is a lot, and they'll, like, extra-help, they'll help you, for sure.
I'm much more aware with the arts now. And I don't take any art classes, but there was, in TOK, we went through an art unit, and in my Spanish class, my teacher, Senadora Garcia, she, we have units on the arts, and she's, it's a really great unit. The art unit I took in Spanish, probably, like, literally life-changing.
End of court.
I honestly love my guidance counselor so much. It was really overwhelming, like, moving countries because the culture in, like, both the countries are very different, and I've never been in, like, a public school, so it was super overwhelming at first. And also, like, the IB diploma is, like, a little intimidating when you, like, are just starting off, and I feel like my counselor was really there for me through everything, even, like, picking and, like, deciding my courses over the two years and really just, like, pushing me in the right direction. Basically, she helped me, like, decide and, like, also, like, reflect on the experiences I've had as an IB diploma candidate. So even though the IB itself teaches me these things, I feel like her, like, she knows what she's talking about, so when she would, like, discuss my classes or my courses or, like, certain decisions I'd made, it was, like, a better way to understand how it was affecting me and, like, how I could move forward with it.
I have a wonderful guidance counselor. I think that she was, she played such a pivotal role in choosing my courses and just being with me throughout my entire high school career over the past four years. And when I was choosing my courses, I specifically remember going into the full IB diploma from 10th to 11th grade. I was actually a virtual student in my sophomore year, so I was doing everything from at home. But my guidance counselor made sure that on Zoom with me and my parents, she made sure to talk me through what courses, what each course entails, and also let me know that this course is something that you could handle. I recommend maybe taking this course, but she always listened to me.
Now, our world is quickly changing, and I'm really happy to say a Harrison graduate knows how to navigate those changes.
There's definitely a large international connection in everything we do.
Like, especially in my Spanish class, like, there's a lot of times where, even though we're learning grammar and we're learning, like, the present subjunctive or something, we're learning it through a current event that's actually happening in the world.
Because I know there's value in understanding and learning about other cultures, so I'm freely able to describe mine to other people.
The IB has given me just, like, a broader perspective on the world and different cultures and different countries and just being more of a global citizen rather than just a U.S. citizen.
Hearing other people's opinions, being more open-minded, learning about different identities and respecting that. So I think that IB has a word "international" in it, right? And I think it really does hone that idea of internationalness, and I think it does create a space of respect and interculturalness. And like I just mentioned, the book that I read, it made me realize, wow, like, things are really different in this other country.
So students aren't just more equipped to navigate the world, you're actually going to see that they really are able to now navigate other people. And to think that our graduates are now, our soon-to-be graduates, I should say, are able to do things that we as adults struggle with.
I think the discussion aspect of the IB program is a big part of it, and I think my perspective on things has definitely widened since I've been an IB student, not only because there are students in my classes that are from different areas, that are different ethnicities, that celebrate different religions or holidays or whatever. I think being, there's such a safe place created where you can share your own experiences and feel like you're going to be heard by others.
It's hard to share experiences because you're so different from other people. Everyone's different. So I think the way the courses allow you to share your culture, share your own understandings...
Even though I thought that I would be the one who would bring, like, these different, like, ideas and different, like, you know, perspectives to the classroom, I feel like I've gained a lot more from my classmates. Where everyone's respectful when they talk, everyone is, like, ready to, like, give more insight on what another person has to say. We can, like, agree, we can disagree, but I feel like there's this, like, mutual understanding between everyone that, like, we appreciate what someone else has to say.
Many teachers actually don't incorporate their own opinions into a lot of the content that they teach because they want students to feel like they can have their own voice and...
Recognizing each other's differences and recognizing the beauty in differences within our world and sort of allowing our individual selves and our quirks and our uniqueness to shine.
Now, Dr. Will once took us through an activity where we had the IB learner profile kind of all, like, cut up, and we had to pick what attributes we would, like, want most for our own children. And when you hearken back to that puzzle piece that we had up as a representation of that earlier, well, I'm happy to say you don't have to pick which ones you want in your children because our students have formed that puzzle by the intentional design through the curriculum.
I have very vivid memories of, like, being in elementary school and seeing the puzzle pieces and being like, I don't know how those words really, like, reflect learning in a classroom, but I think as I've gone through high school, you really do use every attribute. Those attributes, for me personally, aren't just, like, on puzzle pieces anymore. I feel like I really do have all of them in me, and I hope I keep them for the rest of my college years.
Something I really like about visually is the puzzle pieces and how every piece fits together to make this perfect circle. And I know there's a saying that nothing is perfect, but this really is as close as it can get to perfect because I think every aspect of that puzzle piece is an aspect of your identity. And some people are more risk-taking than others, some people are more caring of others, some people are more open-minded than others. But I think that, and that's where that balance piece comes in, how balanced are you? And I think that I really enjoy seeing the IB learner profile wherever I see it.
I then brought that open-mindedness, like, back to my house with my family, and I think it just helps me be a more open person, not just in an academic standpoint, but also in, like, an emotional standpoint or a social standpoint, just being able to really, like, be my true self and be open to everyone else.
And so in our IB journey, obviously, on reflection, I just want to close out with sharing our students' reflection on their journey.
I feel like IB really allows you to be more self-aware of yourself, and I've really applied everything that I've learned and every experience I've gained as a means to, like, be more aware of, like, my decisions, how it's impacting others, how it's impacting me, how I can always do better and, like, continue to reflect. I feel like that's, like, so important from the IB.
Definitely reflection, then. Taking, like, a second, or even, like, a minute, or even, like, an hour, or even, like, a whole day thinking about yourself and your actions and how they could affect another person, or how your own actions affect your own life, or just thinking about actions in general is really helpful.
Growing up in the IB diploma program at such, like, a quintessential point in your life, like, four years of high school is kind of, I feel like, the time in your life where you really grow as a human and, like, develop how you want to be in the future. I hope that not only will, like, the attributes that I learned from the IBDP program, like, will stay with me, but I also hope the work ethic that I've developed will stay with me. I think the diploma program is definitely difficult, but it's very rewarding. And all the things that you learn and all the people that you meet and all the teachers that you interact with, it's really just a good thing, and I'm very happy I did it.
And I think they, everything that's up there in the IB mission statement and that we, I believe, are achieving when you listen to the voices of our children, I want to give a quick shout-out while I'm still standing here to Andy Nickel. I sent him lots of different clips and then more clips, and then took out clips, and then sent more clips, and he was very patient with me, even down to the last hour, so thank you, Andy.
We're just happy Andy's still standing after all the work he put in.
I'm really happy he is too. He didn't run away. He might not answer my phone calls anymore, but...
So I just would like to say, first of all, to the group that presented, we know how much work went into the presentation alone. Of course, the work that went into getting those slides to look the way they do is the real work, but I would like to give the board an opportunity to ask any questions, if you have any. That was a pretty comprehensive 20-year look.
I have a comment. Out of all the presentations that I've been involved in, I mean, this is probably one of those. It's everything you've done, you guys did a terrific job, even the kids up there, excellent. And I never speak. Can you hold that? Excellent. Excellent.
The students always sell everything, so...
Well, Mr. Puccio says he never speaks, but when he speaks, everybody listens.
I just think it's worth pointing out how none of this could have happened without the support of our community.
Absolutely.
To the point that was made about supporting our students and paying for exams, I always hearken back to a comment that was, I think it was Ms. Malchevsky made, where she said, "It wasn't the students you would necessarily expect that had the impact of us covering the thousands of dollars' worth of costs, it was students that were kind of hidden, that didn't feel comfortable asking their families for financial support, and we didn't necessarily know that that was what was holding them back." And there aren't, not every community... And there aren't, not every community sees every child as their responsibility. And our community has really done that over 20 years. They've looked at all of the children and they've really taken ownership of the idea that every student in this community deserves opportunity. And they are willing to vote for school budgets that include things that don't just help their children, they help every child. So I think it's really worth thanking our community who, for 20 years, has supported our school budgets and supported the children in this community.
And this extraordinary mission. You know, Mrs. Mangan, I want to say something about when the board does something because we definitely should credit the community. But it always takes a courageous board to do it. Somebody's got to do it first. No one's followed us yet, but that's okay. And when we talk about expending money, sometimes people think we're spending money. What's the return? So the obvious return is the value to children. The other return is the reputation of a high school changes the perception of a community. It changes the real estate values in a community. And, you know, Dr. Tyler sees the visitors coming from across the country and across the world because of our commitment and the performance of our high school. So yes, there was a cost, but there's also been a tremendous value to our community. We have a high school that we should all be proud of. It really is an, filled with extraordinary people. I'm so glad that you spent a moment to let the kids talk about that faculty of ours. And that, Marlene, that you narrated that now almost every single teacher has been IB-trained, that we have a philosophy that we apply from kindergarten to 12th grade. And the reason our results continue to grow, by the way, is not just the high school. But as Kim and Chris pointed out, the kids that are seniors now experience the NYPD. That number is going to grow exponentially as more and more children. Remember, everybody is an IB student in this school from the time they enter until the time they choose not to participate. And they can be a DP candidate or they can be a certificate candidate, doesn't matter. So I want to close with one thing that Lisa started with, and I thought it was really the right message. We got rave reviews, let's be honest, at the end of our five-year review. We were considered a model school. And there was not one person on my team or anybody sitting in this room that was at all satisfied with those results. And we just dug deeper and did more and expanded opportunity, deepened our training, listened to our kids. And 10 years later, our growth from beginning to end is almost unparalleled. And we're not done. That's the good news, we're not done. So this process of being satisfied would be the wrong thing. We should be happy, but there's nobody here, certainly, I'm not satisfied. Let me just say that out loud. It's fantastic, I'm proud, but we're not done. There are still kids that need to get in that mix, that are not in it. And we'll figure it all out. We have more changes. Actually, the presentations that are coming will foreshadow some of the good work that's going on at the elementary level. But it was a long night. It's been several, I think we reviewed this presentation probably five or six times. And Mr. Puccio, I'm glad you were happy because it was long, but it was powerful. And we made some changes even as late as four o'clock today, but all well worth it. And I just want to thank the entire team. And Chris, you're not wrong, it takes a village. It's everybody, as Mrs. Mangan said, it's not just us. It's a community that's embraced us. So thank you. And you should all go home because IB testing starts on Friday and you need to get some rest.
Thank you. That was really wonderful. Thank you. Yeah, and I just, I really hope that parents choose to watch this. I mean, there's such a wealth of information and the kids just really hit home. I got teary-eyed multiple times because when you think about most education, people talk about, you know, school happening to kids. But this is, these students are choosing, you know, to really follow their passions and choose their pathway that's so specific to them. No two courses or transcripts look the same. And yeah, I mean, especially for me, this was perfect timing for me with a rising eighth grader.
That's right.
Yeah, so thank you.
This was a preliminary for you. You probably know more about IB than you need to. Everybody get home safe. And we'll be putting this up on our website in various different forms because the snippets of video and Kim sort of pausing and narrating the elements, you can sort of just take a piece and think about it, so. Thank you very much. All right, it's back to work for us, ladies and gentlemen.
So moving on to the personnel report, I will take the personnel report on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none. A, certificated personnel. One, resignation. Two, regular appointment, SED clearance received. Three, temporary appointment, SED clearance received. Four, leave of absence without pay. Five, change of status. B, non-certificated personnel. One, resignation for the purpose of retirement. Two, temporary assignment, SED clearance received. Three, change of status. C, other. One, student, teacher, observer, SED clearance received. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel report? Second? Questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none. Moving on to the administrative report. I will take on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none. A, approval of Harrison High School, ninth through 12th graders, field trip to Jackson Township, New Jersey for Physics Day. B, approval of ice hockey merger. C, acceptance of donation from the Harrison Ave School PTA. D, acceptance of donation from the Harrison Ave School PTA. E, acceptance of donation for the Black Bowed Giving Fund on behalf of New York Life and its donors. F, approval of CSC CPSE minutes. G, approval of CSC CPSE recommendations. H, approval of CSC CPSE annual reviews. Do I have a motion to approve the administrative report?
Motion.
Second? Questions or comments? I would like to give a thank you to both the Harrison Ave PTA on their generous donations as well as the Black Bowed Giving Fund on behalf of New York Life. Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept the administrative report? Sorry, second. We already did. All in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none. Moving on to the finance and facilities report. I will take on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none. A, treasurer's report, March 2023. B, contract for health services, Bedford Central School District. C, contract for health services, Rice City School District, 2022-23. D, approval of architectural services, H2M. E, contract for special education services, Andrews Children's Center. F, contract award, RFB number 22-23-23, asset recovery. G, contract award, RFB number 23/24-01, asbestos lead and PCB approval, removal. H, 2022-23 appropriation transfers. I, approval of contracts to provide pass-through funds for special education services, American Rescue Plan. J, approval of contracts to provide pass-through funds for special education services. K, quarterly report for extra classroom activity funds. Do I have a motion to approve the finance and facilities report? Second? Questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none. The next regularly scheduled business meeting is May 3, 2023. Do I have a motion to close the business meeting? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? We are adjourned. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.